Spring survey distribution and we've included seventh to 12th graders to be able to participate. Opt out letters were initially sent to the families so that if they had children, if they did not want to participate, they did not have to. This is not mandatory at all. And the surveys were taken on March 18th and 19th as well as on April 2nd and 5th. And I would like to publicly acknowledge that my understanding of when the initial surveys went out, that there was a a challenge with the survey completion and that that was part of the reason of necessitating additional time. And and that had to do with the server that was being utilized. So the initial surveys included the upward sleepiness scale for children adolescents. This a validated scale that evaluates is someone excessively sleepy or not? And then the childhood sleep habits questionnaire is giving a broad assessment to be able to identify, are there features of sleep? That are concerning that there is a likely sleep problem present? And so both of those have threshold cutoffs of being able to do a binary normal to abnormal. Or or you're doing pretty well, or hey, there might be a problem here. So when we look at this, first and foremost, we did have about 70% of students complete the surveys. And so that is an awesome, awesome statistic. Now, there were about 1% of students who opted out of the survey. So there was a gap of students who didn't participate. And and that is again, fully up to the student. We do want the students to know that they have the ability to make those decisions as well. By no means do we want anyone to feel obligated. And that only helps with being able to add the value. People are voluntarily participating. Then that is a value proposition of, I I do think I have a concern and I do want to have that checked out. When we look at the grade levels of participation by grade, this is not surprising. And this has in fact been what we've seen in other school districts as well. That the younger the age group, the higher the likelihood is that they complete all the surveys. And that as we advance to the older grades, that we see that that participation starts to wane. A little bit of an ironiness is that most typically our seventh and ninth graders are the ones who are actually doing a really great job with sleep. And it's our 10th to 12th graders that we actually are seeing are struggling the most. So whether or not this is a little bit of a biased selection or or what may be contributing is yet to be determined. When we look at the overall scores for the student population, what we see is that there's about 20, almost 23% of students who when they completed the upward sleepiness scale, which again is evaluating our, are you sleepy? It was about 23%. Now, when looking at overall statistics nationally, based on different data that's available for teenagers, the average statistics for excessive sleepiness ranges between four and 20%. So this is a little bit higher than what we typically will see nationally. Now, in terms of the childhood sleep habits questionnaire, we're seeing about 45% of students are responding with answers that would be concerning for there being a possible sleep disorder being present. Now, what is great here is that this is lower than what we would expect from the national statistics. We generally are seeing about 58 to 73% of middle school and high school students having issues. When we look at what is reported in in peer reviewed published literature, we generally are seeing that that's about 25 to 30%. So this is a great number for us to know, to be able to say, what is our starting place? And so most of our other school districts, we do see this number being a little bit higher, around 55 to 65%. So so that is a promising thing to see. Now, when we look at the information by grade, similar to what I had described, if that our seventh and ninth graders generally are okay. And then we're starting to see our 10th to 12th graders, we do see a relatively similar trend. However, I would say that that's most consistent in regards to sleepiness. So those who participated and there's obvious answers that are suggestive sleepiness. We're seeing our 10th to 12th graders definitely more affected than our seventh and ninth graders. Although, as you can see by grade, that number is increasing. In terms of the childhood sleep habits questionnaire, we do see that that's relatively consistent across all grades, which is which is actually a little bit unique compared to what we've seen in other school districts. We do see slightly higher percentages in our 10th to 12th graders, a little bit of a dip in our 11th graders. Although the sleepiness is a little bit elevated there. And so the reason I just point this out is because the school district that we've been with for the longest. What we had identified is that in the first year, there was about 64% of students who had pathologic sleep. And we had found that between the seventh and ninth graders, that they were relatively preserving good measures of sleep and our 10th to 12th graders really struggled. We now have been in that school district for four years. And so the initial 10th to 12th graders who have participated have all graduated. And the 12th graders who are currently there are our original ninth graders. And what we've seen is that we went from 64% of pathologic sleep to this year was the first year we broke from the 40s and actually are 38%. And the reason I just point that out is because one of the things that this program seems to do really, really well is reinforce the preventative or maintenance strategies that may be present. It's not to say that it can't be successful in terms of interventional strategies to help in being able to change behaviors or identifying the sleep disorders that may be present. But we are very respectful of anti-stark laws and are not trying to generate new referrals. And so the part that would make the biggest difference there is really going to fall on families and students utilizing this information to decide that they want to have any type of medical evaluation. To see whether or not there's anything else that's actionable to be done. When we look at from hours of sleep per night, this is pretty similar to what we've seen in other school districts that are again, our seventh and ninth graders are doing much more. Kind of consistent with what we would see for this grade. And then the top 10th to 12th graders really we see are struggling the most. And the weekend hours, I would say that the students are reporting a lot more sleep than what many of the other school districts that we've seen report, because many of them are reporting barely getting eight hours. So there does seem to be some abilities to have some recovery sleep on the weekends. But again, looking at this is, it's always very important to kind of recognize those trends. In the seventh and ninth graders, really looking at how do we further augment their ability to kind of retain some of the skills that they're having to be able to get those right number hours of sleep. And our 10th, 12th graders really trying to dissect, what can we do to be able to help them achieve those age appropriate duration hours of sleep? And so when we look at this by grade, and if you were just to kind of stratify the percentages based on what the students had reported, this is giving some discussion just around below meeting or above the recommended ranges for this age group. And so typically it's eight to 10 hours. And again, seeing just kind of the distribution across. Again, one of the pieces that I would just like to reflect on is that there was the highest percentage of participation in the seventh and ninth graders. And so our 10th to 12th graders, a little bit lower percentage, and especially our 12th graders. And so that may play a bit into some of the analysis or how you would interpret some of this data. So in regards to what are potential next steps, there is more extensive kind of screening or or intake that is available to students who scored high on the initial surveys. This is a via a link where there would be a permission form that has already been shared with families. And that would be for them to be able to complete and that would give allow us, again, we are not taking over care, but it would allow us to give you some more specific insights as to the patterns that you're describing are most consistent with insomnia, circadian rhythm disorder, nightmare disorder, obstructive sleep apnea, et cetera. This can help in facilitating conversations with your primary care physician and in determining whether or not a referral to a sleep medicine practice in your area would be most appropriate for you. And then after completing those surveys, you would actually get a detailed report. And that would be kind of the step that could be possible. Again, not mandatory or an obligation, but an option that if you choose to pursue is available. And that's all.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or comments, Zepi?
Thank you for all the work here and thank you for this overview. Just a clarifying question for your last slide, next steps. So you only get the detailed report as a guardian after they complete the second survey? Or is it for the first survey?
No, it's after the second survey. And part of the reason for that is when we utilize the initial surveys, those those surveys have been demonstrated to be validated for there is this binary sleepy, not sleepy, evidence of pathology, no pathology. When trying to do with the childhood sleep habits questionnaire, when trying to a sub-analysis of that, like when they were validating it, there was not sufficient intake on those types of surveys because they're so brief. To be able to say with a high degree of confidence, hey, you look like there may be a sleep disorder breathing or there may be a nightmare disorder, or there may be, you name the type of disorder. So with the more extensive survey, so if a student is identified as being high risk because of the responses on either the upper third or childhood sleep habits questionnaire, there then is the ability to complete a more extensive intake, which really is almost replicating being able to talk to a sleep physician and in the types of question he would ask. And based on that, would be able to have a personalized report of, based on your responses, this is most consistent with one, two, three, whatever number of types of sleep issues. And that's where we give recommendations on, these are the types of approaches that are taken to be able to diagnose. And then broadly, these are types of approaches for treatment if 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 interested. And it it's never like utilize XYZ medication. It would say something like medications would be utilized or could be utilized, a sleep study may be utilized. Typical like, I'm going to give just an example. There, based on your responses, sleep apnea is of concern. The typical approach to diagnosing sleep apnea is with an in lab polysonography or nighttime sleep test in a sleep lab. The typical approach to treating sleep apnea in the pediatric population is going to first be through the ear, nose and throat doctor and evaluating if there's anything to improve. After that would be considerations around using a CPAP and other kind of options. And so it would never, and with that, they would get a list of sleep providers to their zip code. So that or to the school districts to zip code, so that this way they would be able to discuss with their primary care physician, whether or not any of these approaches are necessary. Our goal is always to refer back to the medical home, so that this way the primary care physician can utilize this information and continue a direct care as what they what they deem appropriate, because they know the patient, the person much better.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the question, because I'm sure there's parents who had the same question. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Steve?
So if I heard correctly, it sounds in general, sleepiness were a little bit worse than the kind of the average that you see, but in terms of sleep habits, Whistickens a little bit better. And in terms of sleep hours, Whistickens a little bit better. Did I hear that correctly?
So in terms of sleepiness, I would say it's a little bit higher of a percentage. In the other school districts, I would say it's been around the 15 to 17%. So your school district was kind of in the twenties, around 23% on average. When we look nationally at research that has been performed, that statistic is very broad, anywhere between four and and 20%. Now, with that stated, one of the things that, again, caution with interpretation, and again, this isn't a research study. So the design of it isn't intended to be able to do one to one comparisons with school districts. And also with some other school districts, I have some schools where it's a very high percentage of all the grades. And so doing doing a comparison across them can be more reliable. When we see that there's a big waning on that 10th to 12th grade age group in terms of participation, that also makes me question whether or not the actual true percentage would be in that 40 something percent. Because the true percentage likely is higher than that, just based on the fact that 10th to 12th graders generally are compromising on their sleep a lot more than our seventh and ninth graders. I hope that answered and didn't make it more confusing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, Dr. Morris, thanks for the presentation. I have twin boys in the high school and they both took the survey. We got a notification that one of our sons could have a possible sleep disorder. And so they got the recommendation to do the follow up survey. One one suggestion is that it didn't specify which son, but but we guessed that one has to be more sleepy than the other. So we guessed it was him that triggered the
So it didn't, oh, that's a very interesting dynamic.
Yeah, so they're they're twins. So I don't know, maybe, but it didn't, it just said your child. I can't remember if it's your your child in 12th grade, but either pace, we couldn't, we couldn't discern exactly which.
And that may be because of the fact that we we try to be as de-identified on our end as possible. And so that is incredibly valuable feedback in regards to specifically twins. Because we we probably have it set up so that it's saying your child and specifying the grade, assuming that if there are multiple children in a school district, they're going to be in different grades. But that is incredibly valuable feedback and we're going to have to think through how we're able to make sure we're giving better specification without it infringing on how much information we have. Because we're trying to be very mindful of not not overstepping in regards to being invasive to like, personal information.
Yeah, that makes sense. And like I said, between the two, one tends to be sleepier than the other. So we pretty much for sure was one child and not the other. And they recently, he recently took the follow up inventory. And I guess we're awaiting the the more detailed report and looking forward to seeing what it says. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. And when that is sent, when that is sent to you, I would very much value your feedback on what your experience is from getting that feedback.
Okay, we'll do. Thanks.
And Dr. Morris, I'm I'm a mom of twins also in the high school. Same thing happened to me, but I kind of guessed.
Oh, so you had the same scenario?
And we both have twins and it happened to both of us.
That is so, that is, that is very helpful to hear. And and clearly, we have not seen the twin experience previously. But it also is interesting to hear that the twins perform differently.
Zepi, was it your situation too or one? Got the follow up survey, the other one didn't? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it is interesting. There, but our, both our twins are fraternal twins. Maybe.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. That makes sense then. Interesting. And I would ask the same thing from you. If you're, if you're, if you decide, again, there's no obligation, no pressure. But if you decide to complete the more extensive intake and get feedback, I would, I would love to hear what your experience is on it.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions? No? All right. Well, again, thank you so much for your time and for providing this feedback to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And if if there's any additional educational materials that your your district would find valuable, please also, and I am just saying this because I know that families are listening and I want to hear from families as well. Please let us know. We're always looking at what other educational materials would be useful for people to be able to utilize.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Good night.
Thank you.
Right. I think our next presentation is with monthly highlights. I got to log down in the meantime.
Hey, everyone. How are you? So we got some highlights to speak. Blake and I are both looking forward to the Bike to School Day on May 30th. So on Thursday, May 30th, there'll be increased police presence and a bike lane on Knight Road. Blake and I will be riding a tandem bike together. I'll convince him. I'll work on it. Additionally, we had 129 students ducked into the National Honor Society. It's great. I'll work on that. I'll convince him. We also have, in our music department, Whistickens, a one o'clock jazz band went out and performed at the Burks Jazz Fest. And Sam Silverman won an outstanding soloist award for his efforts that night, which is pretty exciting. Team Barata, the Whistickens High School Computer Club, took first place at Code Quest, which is a competition involving Lockheed Martin. Pretty cool. Furthermore, our robotics team was recently in Houston. We call, and we qualified for district championships. I believe our last, oh, that was off. Give it over to Blake.
Yep. To add to Harrison's updates, the students in the Asian Cultural Association, they read Asian cultural books to elementary school students. They traveled over to the elementary schools. I believe it was two weeks ago or last week. That's, that's really great to see. Sports are also doing well at the high school. Most of our spring sports have positive records so far. So we're really loving that. I'm on the lacrosse team. I think ours, our record's 10 and three right now, but we're almost done. So it's been a, it's been a fun ride. The ninth graders, they all had a freshman career expo that was the first of its kind this year, which is really great because when you're a freshman, most students really don't know what to do with their lives. So, and it actually in, they shouldn't. I believe high school is a great time to explore and even college. But this is a great time for them to test out, I think there were over 40 careers there, 40 professionals. And so it was a great time for them to be able to find their passions and pick people's brains. And it was a great experience for them. So that they could pick specific classes like I did throughout high school. Like I knew I wanted to do architecture. So I chose all these classes to specifically do that. So that was great. And then seniors, Gavin and I, we're all looking forward to graduation, which is on Thursday, June 6th. We're looking forward to scholarship night, senior award night, the senior class trip to Six Flags. We also have senior prom. And then we're also looking forward to doing the walkthrough to the elementary schools and the middle school. So all of that.
Wonderful. Let's have two more things to add. We had Whistickens Junior Prom, which is phenomenal. We had that went great. Food was awesome. Great music. DJ Landis killed it. And perhaps our biggest update, I'd like to congratulate Blake Zimmerman here on his, wait, see that. Blake Zimmerman has been admitted to Cornell. So. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
With Mr. Antonio's song as well. He's going.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, it's so exciting. He'll be there with Nathan. Great.
Well, great. Thank you for those updates and congratulations. Anyone else have comments or questions?
I was gonna, I could use now or the PSBA time. I wanted to ask Blake about his impressions about the MCIU legislative breakfast. What do you think? Now or later?
Uh, why don't you do now? Because I don't know how late the meeting's going to go and they may.
So on Friday, Joe, Zepi, along with Dr. Chris Van Dr. Juan and Blake and Gavin attended the MCIU legislative breakfast. So that's at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit in Norristown. And it was a bunch of school board directors, superintendents, local legislators, state and state legislators. And it was just, I thought it was really interesting. What did you think, Blake?
Yeah, I thought it was great. I've never been in a situation like that around all those people that have one center focus of like all their focus is just for the students. So I thought that was really, really cool to see. There was a lot of, you know, high level talking and some stuff I didn't get, but it was really cool experience and. But it was fun. I'm glad I went. It's really.
Yeah, we were really happy to have you and Gavin there. And there were just a few other school district that had student reps. And so it was really special to have you. And Blake was right. It was really amazing to see all those people coming together with a sole focus on public education and how we can make it better for everyone in the state of Pennsylvania. So I was really encouraged to be there. I hope you were too.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? All right. Well, then we'll move on. Next, we have our opportunity gap update.
Okay, thank you. Before I get to that though, I would like to state for the record that I would be willing to bet a lot of money that Blake Zimmerman knows exactly what the record is of the board's lacrosse team. Come on, Fessup, you know.
I think it is 10 and 3.
It is 10 and 2. Oh, we got that.
We lost our last game.
That's okay. So that's not what we're reporting on here tonight. We are reporting on the next, this is our next opportunity of what have been many, to help provide an update to board members on all of our work to close the opportunity gaps that we have identified in the past. And you recall that in these, these updates have at least for the last couple of years, and it given us the opportunity to share with you the equity dashboard that has each of the indicators. And we looked maybe one into a deep dive and one or two and and sort of explored how that works. Tonight's different because what some of the feedback we heard was that the data is there, people can go access the data if you want. But what's being done by the teams in central office and in partnership with the teams in the schools to work towards closing those gaps? So what's the process you use? What's actually, you know, who's involved, that sort of thing? So what I've done is I've pretty seamlessly deferred this update tonight to the two experts in the district, one of which is a teaching and our director of teaching and learning, Dr. Jen Schmidt. And then our director, director of equity and cultural responsiveness, Ms. Kazila Tor. And they're a perfect team for this because the intersection of teaching and equity is exactly what we're talking about here. The the gaps in learning can need to be addressed with fidelity all the time. And we're doing that. And what I've asked these two experts to do tonight is share with us a little bit about how the process works, who's involved, and what our next steps here were. So ladies, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to present on the meaningful work being done with the equity dashboard in terms of action planning for continuous improvement. Our agenda is as follows. We'll provide you with an overview and purpose of engaging leaders in equity dashboard action planning. We'll make sure to provide you with an opportunity to understand better what our data workshop approach is all about. And then we'll foster and engage in a conversation around our outcomes and our next steps. So as an overview, which is so essential, we have several teams and committees actively in place and actively engaged in looking at the equity dashboard. And these teams are all designed to ensure that we are leveraging staff and student voice in the co-construction of our action plans. The other piece with the steering committees that we have in place in our teams is that these are individuals who are most proximal to those things that we are seeing in terms of those inequities. And so their thoughts, their insights and their recommendations are so valuable in our planning. All of the committees, once again, from what we're seeing here with our curriculum review steering committees, all the way down to our school-based DEI teams, are additional ways that the district engages staff and administration in creating the data and action plans that we're looking at. It allows us to foster those meaningful discussions and analysis that are taking place as we continue to revise the action plan. And the action plan is a living document and that's how we see our equity dashboard. And so these committees have been and teams have been actively involved in that. For the purpose of this evening, I'm going to use an example of one of those teams. So we have our equity leadership learning sessions that are in place and they consist of our members of our extended leadership team. And we held a February equity leadership learning session that focused on data workshopping. And the purpose was really to develop a space for our culturally responsive leaders to engage in conversations around what they were seeing at the building level. They were tasked with a call to action, solicit the input and feedback from our staff members, our students, and then look at the action plan, look at where we are and develop a co-constructed plan that they would then turn around and share with us during one of our equity leadership learning sessions, which happened to have been the one in February. The purpose of doing so was to provide our leaders with an opportunity to engage in that ongoing review, analysis and monitoring of our equity dashboard data and action plans. We want it to be something that is viable, something that is a living document, something that reflects the needs, action steps, and the proximity of those who know what is best for our students. And so during this February workshop, we engage our extended leadership team around this conversation. And we were able to then garner the insight and input from our staff to co-construct some action plans. So there are a lot of updates happening to our action plans. Our equity and achievement indicators consist of 16 total. With that February workshop that we had, we were able to look at all 16 equity indicators and achievement indicators holistically. During that time, we met in round tables. We were able to engage in meaningful conversation. We looked at the data, what it was telling us, what it wasn't showing us. And then we also were able to link up what we heard from staff and students alike in deciding what needed to be added to our action plan and if needed, what needed to be subtracted and or removed. For this evening, Dr. Schmidt will discuss the cycle of continuous improvement that we use to center this session that we had in February, but also that we continually use to center our data meetings and meaningful conversations that we're having intentionally across the district for consistency and practice and understanding.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Latorre. Good evening, everyone. So as Ms. Latorre mentioned, tonight I'll be speaking about our data workshop approach Um, so as Ms. Latour mentioned, um, tonight I'll be speaking about our, um, data workshop approach um, that we employed with our administrative team in February. And what I'll share with you is what I shared with our administrative team in that um, our approach to data analysis and that cycle of continuous improvement is not something that's new. Um, and it is actually targeted and strategic work, um, that we have been working with our building teams on. Um, and we've had some focused efforts this year to, um, really reframe and refine our processes so that we are building capacity with our staff and different stakeholders throughout the year. Um, and we're also building consistent processes across the district with our data teams, um, with our curriculum committees, um, with other committees that we have established across the district. Um, so we're using a similar process to analyze the data, develop plans, put those plans into action and to monitor the progress. And with our administrative team, when we talk about that cycle of improvement, um, it isn't just a matter of taking a look at the equity dashboard and some of the disparities that we're seeing in that data. But we're also, um, having our team lift up and leverage the, um, some of what they're seeing in other measures that we have in place across the district at different grade levels um, and the action steps that are in place in support of, um, seeing and making change within those equity dashboard indicators, which are really a snapshot of different indicators that we have, um, at the district level. When we talk about the planning process, um, we're talking about not only just developing steps and putting those steps into place, but the most important piece is thinking about why. Why are the, um, what we're seeing in the data? Why is it sustaining? What are some of the root causes that are in place? Also thinking about what do we want to see in our outcomes? What are the desired results? Um, oftentimes in teaching and learning, we talk about backward design, thinking with the end in mind. So where do we want to be? And how do we put steps into place so that we're driving towards where we want to be? Um, and then ultimately putting those action steps in place. But the important piece is the monitoring piece. So it's not enough to just put the action steps in place. Um, and to, you know, a, a year later, take a look at the equity dashboard indicators to see whether or not we've made progress. Again, that, that's where we connect to some of the other systems that we have in place, um, and the data analysis that's in place to think about all the different measures that we have and how we can use those other measures as indicators throughout the year to determine whether or not we're making progress. And as I mentioned to you, one of the really important aspects of the planning piece is thinking about the why. Thinking about, um, again, what are the contributing factors that may be influencing what we're seeing in the data, thinking about those patterns and trends? Um, but most importantly, thinking about our students and how our students are, um, engaging with the learning environment. So what about, what is, what it is, what is it about the interaction of the curriculum and our learners, um, instruction and our learners, um, and the learning environment and our students? Um, and how are all of those things potentially impacting what we're seeing in the data? Another important element of that why is also thinking about what is within our locus of control? Because we know that there are a number of factors that influence what we're seeing in the data. But we have to think about what's happening with the students while they're with us during the day, while they're in front of our staff, while they're, uh, within our buildings. Um, and really focus on, um, some of those aspects when we're designing those action plans. And within those action steps, it's really important for us to think about, um, and plan, plan, um, using that asset-based lens. So thinking about, um, you know, using these guiding questions to think about how we're providing, um, equitable access and opportunities for students. Um, making sure that we are using culturally relevant and sustaining practices. And also thinking about the diverse needs of all of our students. So that way, again, we're taking an asset-based can-do approach um, to putting those action plans or action steps into place um, and not thinking about it through a deficit lens or a can't-do mindset. And now I'll turn it back over to Ms. Latour.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. So along those lines of the asset-based mindset, you know, in preparation prior to looking at the data, it's really readying the team to explore that data in such a way that we're able to use that asset-based approach. And so one thing that's very important is for us to lift up how we can identify those strengths. Dr. Schmidt mentioned what is in the locus of our control. So again, although there are always external, um, factors that are at play, what can we do internally? What is in the locus of our control that we can navigate and create? With an asset-based mindset, what is so empowering about it is that it focuses on the strengths, not only the strengths of the learners, but also the strengths of the team, the staff. Because it's through the collaborative strengths that we're able to develop those solutions that can then meet the needs of those students. And so one thing that we look at very carefully through that asset-based lens again is focusing on an improvement-oriented approach. We're also looking at how we can plan instruction and provide support for our students. So if we take any of our teams, such as our PBS core team, for example, we're utilizing that data to inform our practices, but also to decide and determine what is the best support or interventions that are needed for that student to reach success. And so as we continue to look at equity as a centerpiece too, we have our equity pillars in place. And for the conversation that we had in February with our extended leadership team, we looked at an essential question. How might our educational community use our own specific data to drive equity efforts within our community? And so providing our staff with the opportunity to also be self-aware and self-reflective is so important as we're looking at that data. We examine so many things in terms of that asset-based piece, such as ensuring that we're staying within that asset-based framework, but also making sure that we're cognizant of bias, right? And confirmation bias as we look at that data. So in those sessions that we have with leadership, it's valuable because then we have the turnaround opportunities to ensure that staff is also aware and cognizant of how they're reading, how they're bringing in perhaps assumptions or narratives that can in fact, um, have a reference and also an influence over the data piece. And so there's a lot of work that goes into what we're doing to empower and continue to build the capacity of our staff, students, and those who are involved in our leadership team. In terms of outcomes and next steps, so what are we going to do and continue to do? So we are so delighted that we have a collaborative team, that we have collaboration at our CO level down to our building level. We understand very clearly and candidly that this is not something that we can do solo. So collaboration is so key for us. And so we're going to continue to reimagine best practices with staff for ongoing engagement with our equity dashboard. The ongoing and intentional monitoring to assess what is working and what is not working is so beneficial to us. Because again, we want to ensure that we are doing the best thing by our students. And so this ongoing work is intentional and deliberate piece that we have in place because we have a living document with that equity dashboard. But more importantly, we have that sheer commitment to action, assessment, adjustment, and intentional collaboration so that we can focus on the evidence to drive us forward in terms of our best practices. And so storytelling with data, which is so important, and the story continues. So when we're looking at that data, we're also looking at it in the sense that these are numbers that we're seeing, but these numbers are representation of people, of human beings, our students here at Whistick Hicken School District. And so we are evidently very committed to looking at what changed? Why were these changes in place? What trends are emerging? We are cognizant of who do you think was and will be affected and how? So those ongoing questions, being self-aware, posing those questions during our teaming is so essential in us so that we can drive forward the change that we are looking for. Did change happen as expected? Why or why not? What is the impact? What is the outcome? So these questions that we have are very essential questions to continue to drive our monitoring and also our work forward as a team. All right, at this time, we're willing and open to taking questions. Thank you so much for your attention.
Questions?
I've got a question. Um, thanks for the presentation. Um, can you give us a, a more concrete example of how this continuous improvement cycle, um, played out? And, um, you know, what problem were you seeing in the data? What sort of root causes or hypotheses did you have about a change it? What actions did you take? And then afterwards, what sort of results or impact did you see? Um, and if you can give us again, a more concrete example of a, of a success story of this cycle at work, that'd be great.
So in terms of the work that we're doing, um, I'll take the belonging climate survey results, um, because again, we're looking at that data, something that's proximal, something that's timely. And so in looking at the data results that we have here and looking at the action plan, we were able to see that some of the work, most of the work that we were doing around teacher, the relational aspect, teacher building relationships with students, that that did have an impact on how students perceived their sense of belonging in our district. Because those were across the board, whether K through like elementary through secondary, they were high in terms of our adult relationships with building, um, that connection with students. And so when we're looking at that data piece and those things that we're putting into action, the conversation is around, well, what did we do to build those relationships with and between students and teacher? So it was the restorative practice and the relational aspect of it, the community building that took place in that sense. Um, when we're looking at other things that we find within the belonging climate survey, student voice and agency was something that came out as a strength and a glow. So what were we doing to cultivate that and foster that? So we know that those student organizations and anytime we have student opportunities to leverage their voice, insight and input has also helped us to garner that work that we need to move forward. So just from that lens, I know that our district leaders have been looking at that belonging climate survey results, those results very carefully and closely. I've been meeting with the team in such a way. And I do believe that the intentional looking at the data, especially the belonging climate data, shows a correlation to other things that they're seeing in the, in their building, respectively, in terms of academic performance, other data that they're looking at. They're like, I'm not surprised because I, this is what I expected. So when we're engaged in conversation, what has been so unique is that they're seeing those fundamental trends come up and emerge. So that's one example.
I would just add, just in like in terms of the academics, not a specific example in terms of a success story, but just thinking about how we've been reframing our data conversations in the building. Um, so our data meetings, for example, at the elementary level, um, a significant focus of those meetings, um, in the past has been on, um, identification of students needing different tiers of support as part of our multi-tiered systems of support. And one of the key elements that was missing as part of that conversation was talking about poor instruction and what's happening with all students. Because there's the possibility that something that's happening as part of poor instruction might actually be contributing to what we're seeing with data around specific students or small groups of students. Um, so that was a pretty significant shift in starting with how are all of our students doing? And then thinking about based on some of the things that we're seeing. Um, so for example, we may see, um, areas of writing that are in need where we see students that aren't performing at, all students performing at a level that we would want them to be performing. Um, where we're seeing in terms of, uh, you know, fluency and reading, like there are some areas to focus on. Um, but putting steps into place, um, thinking about instruction that's happening in the classroom and how instruction could potentially change to address some of those areas. And then thinking about our district assessment measures, our curriculum-based measures that we can use um, to see how what we're putting into place in the classroom is ultimately impacting the data for all of the students. Still having conversations about needs of individual students and those tiers of interventions, but making sure that we're addressing what's happening with all students first before we, we dive into those individual student needs. So that's been ongoing work this year. Um, the data, the continuous improvement process was also an integral part of our math steering committee work this year. Um, so we took a look at, um, data points at all levels. Um, looking at performance data, looking at some of our enrollment data. Some of them were our equity dashboard indicators. Um, and really taking our steering committee through a process of identifying some of the patterns and trends that we were seeing, um, which really led to some of the disparities that we were seeing in, um, in terms of performance and enrollment. Um, but helping that group to understand and be a part of, um, you know, what we're seeing in terms of the trends and then thinking about our curriculum review work moving forward and some of the, the changes and the work that we need to do programmatically, structurally, um, in order to, you know, address some of the things we're seeing. So it's, it's a process, still moving forward.
All right, thank you.
So the belonging survey that you brought up, no, she brought it up. I, I did have a follow-up question. That, that was a survey that did show some concerns about that some students felt that they did not belong here. That's the survey you're referring to?
The, the belonging climate survey is that one where we are attaining students' sense of belonging in the district, yes.
Um, do we have any intentions of doing a follow-up survey to that? To see if there's been any improvement in how students feel since we put some more effort into that?
So we did administer, um, a February belonging climate survey and we were able to gather the data results. And we could clearly see that in terms of student data results, there is a promising growth and trend in the right direction in terms of student sense of belonging. And so we see that we have a higher rate of students who participated in the belonging climate survey. We also see that, um, our numbers in terms of growth trends is actually going in the positive and right direction. And we are utilizing that data results now currently to ensure that we're creating turnaround slides and presentations to share with our staff as we continue then to look at what do we have in place regarding our belonging climate action plan? What do we need to do at our respective building to meet those needs? And so we have that district level, high-level look. And then we also have an opportunity to talk one-on-one about building level data and intentional steps that can take place to support what we're doing. So the, the, the entire, um, survey that we took for the 2024 is definitely showing a trend in growing in the positive direction in many ways for us.
And what sort of like specific steps like did we take? We're talking about community building, like what sort of specific things did we do to try to work on building more of a community feel within our building?
So again, there are so many different things that we're doing at building levels to foster community building. At a district level, we believe in restorative practice and social emotional learning, the restorative. Again, when we look at the eighty percent of it, it is about community building. How do we build community? How do we foster and cultivate meaningful relationships? And so that has been something that has been ongoing. And as a result, the data speaks to how students have seen and view their relationship with staff members or any adult for that matter in the district. It's very positive and it's very high. Those are actual, um, strengths and glows across the district in terms of where we are there. In terms of work that we're doing continually to build on social emotional learning, because that's key. We know that there's a correlation between a student's sense of belonging and that social emotional wellness in their academic thriving. And so that's something that we've been concentrating on. In terms of leveraging student voice and agency, we have done that intentionally at the district level as well as in each respective building. So more of that is so important for us going forward. We have opportunities where we are learning about culturally responsive teaching, the practices, ensuring that we have culturally relevant literature in our curriculum. We know how vital it is for students to see representation, for them to have a whole storytelling of what it is and what's happening. I think that as we continue to go forward, one thing that we're looking at as a next step for us would be how do we continue to build meaningful peer-to-peer relationships? Uh, because that's essential. So we have ideas about that and we're positive about in the direction that we're going. We have our new place for hate, um, initiative that we're a part of. Again, as a district, we're tying in the work that we're doing already in our district in terms of our equity efforts. We're actually using no place for hate to spotlight those efforts, but also to glean any area, any steps, any actions that we need to take to further support our efforts with our adult-to-student relationship, student-to-student relationship. So there's always growth and work to be done. And so there are many things that we're putting into practice that is unquestionably valuable and helping us to move in the right direction. We're not stagnant, nor are we falling backward. We are moving at a steady pace going forward in the direction that we want to see.
I think that's very nice. Think working more in those peer-to-peer relationships. I still feel we struggle in that area. Um, so I think that's great to hear that we're going to continue to work i- in that area specifically. You're great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? No? All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. So now we are at our first public comment period. I have no blue sheets. Anyone online, Katie? Okay. Is it for the first public comment period? Do we know? I guess we don't know. Okay.
So we have one hand raised on Zoom. It's Carmina Taylor.
Okay, um, and, uh,
Okay, um, and I guess I should have made my statement. Uh, we allow maximum five speakers on any particular topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And no, it's not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we follow up on board docs. And um, we are still using the buzzer, right? I forgot to make that announcement as well. All right, Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So um, this past weekend, our last Friday, um, we had the Black Hall of Fame. And a parent that is a current parent at the district came up to me after the ceremony and basically asked me to be an advocate for both of her daughters. One is in middle school, one is at Blue Bell. And um, it was about belonging. It was about being marginalized. It was about academic performance. I want to just give kudos to the district that you've evolved from the Achievement Attack Plan to the Opportunity Gap. Um, you've made progress, obviously, with Dr. Latour or with Kazaya. Um, very pleased with all of that, but I think there's one other piece that you're missing. And I've been saying this for years, you've got to allow um the community, the outside community, the community members and parents to be part of the process of helping the teachers and the students. When you think about kids that don't feel like they belong, or I'll just specifically say black students in your district, the ones that are marginalized, the ones that have repeat offenses with detentions or discipline issues, they don't feel comfortable talking to people in the building. So I just want to say to Kazaya to please consider um adding a way for parents and community members, and certainly community members that are former students, former parents, um, yeah, former parents as well, to help the district with those gaps, with the opportunity gaps that are there. And then when we talk about educational equity, it's also what are we doing to make parents aware of opportunities for their kids to thrive? And that really needs to start at the elementary level. So no complaints here, just building off of what you guys discussed tonight. But just again, just last Friday, someone asked me to help them because of how their child or daughters feel in your current school system. So it can't be a perfect scenario, but I think that that would be helpful. And the last thing I'd like to ask Kazaya, how is the uh No Place for Hate program being executed? Is it at levels of the school system? And if it's at the high school, um, what, can you guys hear me? Because uh, if it's at the high school, what student group is working with the district? Or is this completely district-led and disseminated? That's all I have for right now. So let those, let those be que- Amy, let those be questions to be answered, please.
Okay, we'll make note of that, Carmina. Thank you. All right, any other speakers, Katie?
No more raised hands on Zoom.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the Board President Report. Um, and this will be for consideration next week, and that's approval of a service agreement with Educational Leadership Consulting for Professional Development for the Wissickin School Board of Directors in the 2023-24 school year and the amount not to exceed $2,500. And this will be for our uh retreat coming up in a few weeks. This will be um with uh Amy, the former president Bradner, and Nancy, uh, she was the superintendent at Springfield. Um, so we'll be doing um our retreat with them and some learning. Um, we'll be focusing on um some development in the area of communication uh about how we can communicate better with the community, not how we communicate out, but how we can communicate when they come with us with questions um and concerns. So that'll be coming up in a couple of weeks. So you can take a look at that contract. Any questions about that? Nope? Yes, it should be exciting. Looking forward to it. We have a couple of fun scenarios for us to talk through. All right, so we'll move on to the Superintendent Report.
Good, thank you. My one item is the much-awaited resolution of the current school year's calendar. And uh, as everybody remembers, we use one of the two budgeted weather days. So this year, we are going to take one day off of the end of the school year in June to account for that one day. So this item, which is to be voted upon next meeting, uh, reflects the last day of school being moved from June 12th to June 11th. And uh, we'll get all that out for official announcement and so forth, uh, when it's officially approved next meeting. I don't anticipate any reason for it not to be, bring that in now, but let's just wait until then.
Great. Thank you. Any questions about that? Anyone not in favor of that?
I saw Blake and Harrison not look so happy over there.
To be clear, Blake is not focused on that.
All right, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Good evening. I just have one item here, um, and it's a special shout-out. We want to congratulate Diane Kraus, who's our instructional, our K-12 instructional coach for technology. Um, she's a technology specialist. She earned the Microsoft Certified Coach credential. And this program, it, right, Harrison's excited. Um, it's a comprehensive coaching program that helps educators develop the skills to become effective instructional coaches, which Diane was already. But this just really adds to her toolkit to help her further support the integration of technology in all of our schools and networks. Um, this i- it was quite a rigorous process. She explained and shared some of her experiences. The training process was not just only comprehensive, but it was quite rigorous. Um, the program hosted um a two-day in-person workshop as well as monthly check-ins and a final portfolio project, where she then had to demonstrate the skills in real-world setting um through a collection of her artifacts to show her coaching abilities. So it was a pretty comprehensive and rigorous process, and we are so honored that she is here, the Wissickin School District, and she brings all of that rich learning and all of those tools to support all of our staff, um, and of course, which supports our students um in the world of technology. So special shout-out to Diane Kraus, and that concludes my report.
Great. Congrats to Diane. All right, any questions or comments? Nope? Okay, Board Solicitor Report, Jeff.
Uh, I have no report because there are no information items.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Board Secretary Report, Wade.
Thank you. Uh, at the next meeting, we'll be looking for approval of the March 11th Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting minutes, the March 18th Work Session Minutes, the April 2nd Regular Public Board Meeting Minutes, the April 15th Health, Wellness, and Safety Committee Minutes, and the April 15th Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee uh Meeting Minutes.
Wade, thanks Wade. Any questions or comments? All right, Board Treasurer Report.
Thank you. Um, we're at the next meeting looking for approval of the insect acceptance and nominating of the Treasury Report uh for March 31st, 2024.
Wait, thank you. And any questions or comments? All right, thank you again. Human Resources Report, yeah.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, for your review tonight, there are five items under Section 13 of the Human Resources Report. The first two action items include resignations, a retirement, appointments, changes of status, leaves of absences, extracurricular changes and volunteer additions. Item three is for the approval of an agreement with STS, Substitute Teacher Services. This gets renewed every two years, so it's coming to its end this June. Uh, and then items four and five are for the approval of the compensation plans for our confidential employee group and our administrators, in which we talked about earlier tonight.
Great, thank you, Danielle. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Communications Committee, Seffi.
No items to report today.
All right, thank you. Uh, Curriculum and Technology Committee?
Uh, there are many items to review, which I will turn over to Dr. Dewan. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have two informational items. The first is regarding our Professional Development Induction Plan for the 24-25 school year. Um, there were some legislative changes that resulted in us needing to update our existing plan. Um, fortunately for the Wissickin School District, our induction plan was already a very robust plan. And so the results of the changes um in terms of the impact on our induction plan for our, our new staff is that there is going to be the addition of three uh professional development sessions that'll be held after school in a new teacher's year two of induction. So the legislative changes have so focused on extending the induction process to be a two-year plan instead of a one-year plan. Um, so that is, so we already had a two-year plan for our new teachers, but we didn't have the professional development component that the legislative changes require. So that's what's being added to our induction plan. That plan is now available online and will be available for public review for 30 days before we request for the board's approval of those revisions, um, which will then allow us to submit it to PDE, which is a requirement. Any questions on that before I move to the second informational item? Okay, the second informational item, which is the announcement of another 30-day review period. Um, this is regarding our K-12 School Counseling Plan. Um, there was again updates in legislation that results in school districts to create a plan. It's often called the Chapter 339 or the 339 Plan. Um, but essentially, it is a K-12 School Counseling Plan that is um required for districts to outline how we're addressing students' counseling needs in addition to career planning and career readiness. That career planning and career readiness piece is what Chapter 339 is most um, most associated with. And so um, the plan that is now available online and will be there for this 30-day review period, um, in, it outlines our program's mission and goals, all of the tremendous work that is already being done in our district as it relates to supporting students um, both with counseling services as well as the um career readiness component, some of which were already in place. Um, but this plan really outlines it all for us to uh submit to PDE. Um, and so it's on review. It is going to be on the June 3rd Public Board Meeting for us to seek board approval, for us to then submit to PDE. Any questions on that informational item before I move on? Okay, we have a host of action items, as Dr. Morris mentioned. Um, many of these action items are um things that we see around this time of year. So it's sort of annual renewals or annual um requests for approval. So I'll go through very briefly with each of the items. The first um is um, this school year, our seniors started with 180 days, as all of our students did. And the seniors are, um, due to um one of the, the snow days, the snow day on January 16th, our seniors now will have 179 days. And so um, we will be seeking an exception to the requirement of 180 days of instruction, which is something that districts are permitted to do. We first have to seek board approval, so we'll review tonight. And next week, we'll seek uh for the board to approve for us to submit for this exception um to use an Act 80 Day for uh November 7th, which is an in-service day when professional development happens for staff. And districts are permitted to use an Act 80 Day to account for a day that's lost, as we will. Um, the second item is um, we'll be seeking for the board's approval of the appointment of our school physician and school dentist for the 24-25 school year. We've been very pleased with the services from these two providers, and so we'll be looking to continue with that relationship. Um, the next is approval of the curriculum and instruction expenditures for the 24-25 school year. These are outlined in the supportive document there, and you'll see that these are, uh, these include instructional resources, assessment tools, and software renewals. The next item is to seek approval of the adoption of the revised planned courses of study and instructional resources that were recommended by our Department, our Office of Teaching and Learning. And these are the resources that were made available for public review in their office for the past 30 days. So this is the board's cycle that will be seeking approval. Um, so you may recall from the last cycle, it was an informational item. It was on review for 30 days. And um, community members are welcome to come into the office of teaching and learning to review. And so now we're seeing it as an action item, oh, well, tonight as a review item. The next item is an annual um request to approve our participation with the Gateway to College Partnership facilitated by the Montgomery County Commite- Community College. The next item is um a review to approve our participation with the Dual Credit Program, also facilitated by the Montgomery County Community College. And this is another annual um request that we see at this time of year. The next item is an agreement with the, the MCIU, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for our Virtual High School Consortium. Um, this participation in this consortium is specifically for students who accelerate through the course offerings that we have at our high school, and they need additional course offerings beyond what our high school offers in the building. Following that item is also a virtual request. This is for the um MCIU's Montgomery Virtual Program. So the MVP Program, this is the platform, the resource that we use for any student whose family chooses for their child to enroll in the Wissickin Virtual Academy. So these are for students who are in the, the virtual um program in our district. The next item is a um shared services agreement, which we have seen before. This is um looking ahead at the 24-25 school year, so it's the estimated amount. You may recall that the, the shared services payments, that the invoices come in, I believe, four times a year. So we often will see shared services agreement, request for payment throughout the year. This is projecting an amount for next school year. The next item is a shared services plan um for approving a payment for the BCIU for shared services plan for this existing school year. So this is the difference in what the board has previously approved to what the actual services have cost. So that's an increase in approximately $8,000. The next item is we'll be seeking approval for the board to award um the Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, also referred to as a Coda. The Coda services for the remainder of the 23-24 school year as well as the 24-25 school year for us to um use GHR. So the board has previously approved for us to hire a Coda, which again is a Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant. And so we went through the RFP process for those services. And so this is approving the award of the RFP process. The next item is, and last item, uh, is we're asking for the board next week to approve for our Leadership Development Services with Bartell and Bartell. The board may recall last summer, we had a full-day session with Bartell and Bartell. So we're looking to engage our administrators in a full-day session this summer as well. Um, as leaders in a school district, we are always learning and growing, and the development of our staff and our students and our leadership is, is so important. So that concludes our report. We'll be seeking approval of all of these items next week.
I don't know how you said that all so fast, but I don't even know if you breathed in between. But thank you.
I have a, a comment and just a couple of questions, if I may. First of all, I wanted to mention that I did um review the science curriculum, and I thought it looked really amazing. I thought it looked really engaging and, you know, I read some of the biology textbook because I had to, and I thought it was really interesting. So um, yeah, I just think, I, I think they did a great job with that resource, so I'm, I'm happy about that. Um, my question to you, uh, Dr. Dewan, how many students participate in WVA these days? And then that Beyond program you were talking about as well, do you happen to know about?
I can get you that information. I do have a good sense off the top of my head, but it would be unfair to you for me to give you inaccurate data. So if it's okay with you, I'll follow up and give you some accurate and concrete numbers.
Yeah, I was just curious. And then my other question is, why are we paying the Bucks County Intermediate Unit? We don't live there.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. We, um, so the, there, we have a student who is receiving services through the BCIU. I'd be happy to provide more details to the board uh in a confidential memo. Um, but that student is at the BCIU receiving services. And earlier this year, the board approved um for a set amount for those services, and the student required additional services. And so I'll be happy to follow up with the board with a confidential memo. Thank you.
I can also add on that, that sometimes I use specialize in a certain type of, of a program. And we'll, I know Montgomery County receives students from other districts too. It was just, just efficient for them to be specialized rather than try to offer everything in the same county.
Okay, I didn't recall that um approval, but that does make sense. Thank you.
I've got a follow-up question regarding um the Montgomery County um Virtual Program. So um, the, the MCIU basically behind-the-scenes runs uh Wissickin Virtual Academy, which is like the district's sort of uh branded cyber charter op- cy- cyber schooling option. Um, and I think for every student that chooses to enroll in our cyber option instead of going to an external cyber option, that's significant savings to us. Um, and they still also get the virtual um education that, that the parents and student want. Um, as an example, for any student that we have that goes to like Pennsylvania Cyber, Cyber Academy um or any sort of cyber charter, I mean, the standard rate we pay them is six, $16,300 if they're a regular ed student, and uh over $42,000 uh if they're a special ed student. So if they choose to go to Wissickin Virtual Academy, our in-house cyber, um, the, the costs per student are significantly less. Um, but I wasn't really sure, looking at the contract that's um up for vote, um, what the actual per-student rate is from the Mon- Montgomery County IU. It's not explicitly stated in the contract. Maybe there's a supporting document. My recollection was it was in the neighborhood of around $5,000 for a regular ed student um or so, but I'd be just curious to see. Um, because even at that rate, but for instance, let's say um $16,000 for a regular ed kid going to cyber charter versus $5,000 if they go to our in-house cyber, that's a savings of $10,000 per student, right? And multiply that by X number of students that are actually enrolled, that's actual real savings to the district. Um, and it could be quite significant. So uh, more information about to follow up on Diane's point, number of kids in uh Wissickin Valley, I mean, Wissickin Valley Virtual Academy and the per-student cost. I mean, Wissahicken Valley Virtual Academy and the per student cost, regular ed and special ed that the IU charges us.
Thank you.
I also have a couple of questions. Just clarification for fifteen point three. I thought the law has changed that we have to do the one eighty days or the nine hundred something, something hours. And then uh the second part of that is why just the seniors? I like, this one just tripped me up. I just didn't understand it.
Uh, the seniors uh piece is that um we have that graduation date fixed. And the four other uh twelve grades, including Harrison's grade, uh have to go for the last few days of school after graduation, um where the seniors are cut loose.
So so do does the new um what passed recently does not take into effect? I thought it was no longer an and but an or.
It it does. It it um you're right. And the thing about seniors is because they leave that much earlier, uh we have to go for the the day piece rather than the hours. That makes sense, because everyone else will have, if you go for the full, we actually end up having one hundred eighty two days. We we budget uh one hundred eighty four and then uh subtract that to weather days. So everybody goes one hundred eighty two except for the seniors.
But as per the regulation, we no longer have to do both.
Correct. So if I could just jump in, it also depends on how you pass your calendar. Uh, certain districts were readjusting their calendar midway through the year, saying essentially that they weren't going to have the one hundred and eighty days. And if you do that, you wouldn't have to act for the one act eighty day. Um, and I do think it's possible in the future, if you pass your calendar with enough notations and caveats, that you wouldn't have to seek the act eighty day. But because of the way we passed our calendar, we do.
All right, just I guess for for the future, we probably should adjust for that. And then um Dr. Dewan, I would love to get an update at a future time on both um the points in fifteen point seven and fifteen point eight. I'm very curious to see how many of our students uh take advantage of the gateway program as well as the dual credit program and what efforts we take to kind of raise awareness of these programs to know that this is these are options for our high school students. And you know, how do we kind of promote other than them talking to their guidance counselors? Are there any other surround sound options for them to understand these these really amazing programs that we offer through the high school? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Simon, thank you so much for that report. All right, we'll move on now to facilities and transportation. Joe?
Thank you. Um, so first off, I have a recap of last week's facilities and transportation committee meeting, which met on April twenty fourth. Um, we started off that meeting with um Dr. Chris Field giving us uh uh I guess a primer on debt financing at the district and basically the relationship of uh our debt financing budget and our ability to raise funds for any large scale construction projects like a like a new high school, for instance. Um, we also got an update on the Knight Road fencing slash walking path project. Um, Brian, our facilities manager, gave us an update on the Blue Bell addition and renovation project. Um, we also got a status update on the high school stadium bleachers. And um we also got a heads up regarding Shady Grove facade and structural investigation, which will be something, uh be one of the action items we'll be looking at uh to vote on next week. And then finally, we got an update on the implementation of a first view bus tracking system on our uh on our buses. So um that was uh last week's uh meeting, and it was chock full of information. And uh we also have a whole slew of action items for consideration uh tonight and for voting next week. And I'm going to ask Wade to uh give us a quick rundown of those items, please.
Yes, thank you. Like like Dr. Dewan noted, a lot of these are recurring and um the first item is discarding and selling obsolete equipment per policy. Uh, seven fourteen, we do that annually, so uh we solicit the individual buildings to tell us exactly what they want to dispose of so that we can do it over the summer, so that frankly, it just doesn't accumulate. Um, and we do try to get rid of all of those things as environmentally positively as we can, uh including trying to find uh happy homes for the materials. Um, the concrete is an annual item. It's twenty four thousand four hundred ninety nine this year. And again, every single year, we're very fortunate that we um are able to identify a concrete and curving that needs to be replaced, and we do a bid and uh get it approved at this meeting. The next item is also a recurring item. Uh, we have certain vendors that are co-star vendors, and the best way for us to um acquire the uh materials that are covered under these contracts is periodically when inventory becomes low, uh we had to uh buy additional materials. This um motion will allow us to do so. And that is a good way for us not to have an awful lot of stock that theoretically could go bad if it just accumulates. This is more of a sort of just-in-time uh motion that lets us buy it as we need it. The next item is periodically we come to the board and ask for approval for uh the um delivery and um pricing of the gasoline, biodiesel, and heating oil to a lesser extent. And that motion is contained there with an explanation of the pricing. Uh, sixteen point six is um very similarly, and we have to do this periodically, but we have uh machinery that um is old and needs to be replaced. This is the HVAC field panel at Central Office. I believe it's approximately twenty four, five years old or some uh or it it is old machinery. And it's seeking replacement for twenty four thousand five hundred seventy two dollars. The next item is, as uh Joe mentioned, uh we talked about this at the um facilities meeting last week. There were additional unsuitable soils and additional testing needed as part of it, and we're seeking an additional sixty thousand dollars in order to uh continue uh with the Blue Bell expansion uh project. Um, the next item is the Johnson Control um uh system preventive maintenance inspection and cooling systems at uh Lower Gwinnett Blue Bell in the administration building with the pricing noted for uh the period of time generally around uh seventeen thousand dollars per year. Dewey Engineering, we're seeking, and we did have a highlight for this, as Joe mentioned, at the meeting. Uh, we're asking them to do some structural investigation at Shady Cove Elementary School, and then they will come back and tell us uh what it looks like. That'll be discussed with the facilities director and then also discussed with the board to see whether or not uh we're in good shape or whether we do need to do additional testing and uh remediation at that point. Again, another recurring one is the fire alarm sprinkling testing for uh Johnson Controls at thirty two thousand. Um, the next item, the wording I put in there uh needs to be amended a little bit. Um, the not to exceed should be three thousand dollars, and it is in support of middle school students um in need of mental health and wellness support. Uh, so I'll make that adjustment to the next meeting. And the final item is um we have milk coolers in our buildings, and they are old and need to be replaced for uh twenty two thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars. Are there any questions on those items?
Wait, I'm just curious, like these items that we sell. Like, wha- what is the market for these? Like, where do we sell them?
For for like the obsolete stuff?
Yes.
Yeah. So um Mr. Badger asked the question at the last meeting as well. So how do we get rid of um vans? And there's different ways.
Not just vans, but I'm like talking about like disc disc players, sousaphones, like other vans.
Are you in the market for a used oboe?
Yeah, like that's what I'm talking about.
So so that some of this stuff is very, very difficult to get rid of, and you know, again, we'll we'll do whatever we can to find a home so that and doesn't end up in a, you know, dumpster.
Yeah.
Um, but some of it won't. Um, but to the extent that we can, we are seeking people to tell us that they are interested in this. It is available to the public if somebody were interested in an old uh piece of equipment or whatever is listed. Uh, and some of, you know, not those items that you mentioned, but some of it we destroy in a way so that we can sell it uh for scrap. Uh, scrap metal, you know, has value, so.
And before we would toss it, like, do we consider donating certain items?
We we'd be happy to donate whatever can't be sold for value, sure.
Okay. All right. I was just curious. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Steve?
No, go ahead.
Um, the Blue Bell soils, that was that was a, that just came up recently.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain?
Yes. So um at the facilities meeting, what we uh mentioned is whenever um, I shouldn't say al- almost always, when you do a construction ta- uh construction project, you do a certain amount of borings in the area. We did, and um we knew that there was going to be unsuitable soils, but when they actually dug up to create the base for the construction, uh there was more than what we had thought. Um, it not an incredible amount, but enough so that we needed to do additional testing, which is what this uh motion is going to be uh seeking approval for additional uh test. We still have some um testing dollars set, but we're going to need to do additional testing as we continue down the rest of the construction, and that's what this will allow. Another um uh item that we discussed at the meeting, but that won't be brought forward to the um to the May and Ju meetings, um is uh there'll be a change order for approximately sixty thousand dollars for the actual unsuitable soils themselves. So if the soil that we're trying to build the school upon isn't appropriate, uh it needs to be dug up and carried away, and we need to create um and a better base, which is probably um what, stone aggregate and other things. So that cost, we're still negotiating, but we believe is going to be approximately sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Um, I I sent it, this is more of a comment. I sent an email right before these meetings. Um, I was at the PSBA call this past Saturday, and there they mentioned that uh there's a number of environmental grants opening up May first. So I don't know if s- if some of this stuff uh would apply under that umbrella. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that there's some new grants opening up that we might be able to take advantage of.
Thank you. I saw the email and uh we will investigate.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you so much for the report.
Thank you.
Hey, Finance Committee?
Okay, uh, we had a uh informative and productive meeting a couple of weeks ago. Finance Committee, we started off by uh getting more information on where the district stands in terms of its medical access reimbursement uh for certain services provided by the district uh and ways to uh increase the amount of uh medical access reimbursement for those services. We also talked about um behavioral uh assessment specialists uh and the need for those services within the district. Uh, and then we went to a discussion of the upcoming budget. Um, and uh not only talked about uh revenue enhancements, but also talked about some priorities and where we need to spend our money within the district to to meet those priorities. We also have, uh, I think, six items. Um, and Wade, are you gonna jump through those, or would you like me to do?
I, it's up to you.
I could. Yes, since Eddie believed in me. All right. Six other items. Uh, one is that just the normal financial reports. Uh, there's a structural supply bids. For the upcoming school year, uh the fact that we want to continue to retain Fox Rothschild's legal services, uh contract addendum for our food service provision. Um, we want to continue to use uh melee for our audit services, and then as with every month, uh our list of payments.
You did it!
Thank you.
Oh, my God. Great, thank you. Are there any comments or questions? All right. And I believe we do have one more budget workshop coming up, correct?
The you you announced the May meeting.
Maybe, that's what I thought. I thought I announced, but yes, so for anyone up in interested in coming and hearing about the budget.
Correct.
May fifteen, thirteen, May thirteen. I would love the public to come. Yes. So anyone out there that is interested in our budget? There we go. All right. Um, all right, moving on, Paul, Marshall's on here, and we don't have anything for policy anyway. Okay. Uh, Racial Equity Oversight Committee, Paul?
Thanks, Amy. Um, we have no items for this evening. However, on April fifteenth, we did have our final meeting of the year. Um, during that meeting, we've heard an update from the administration on uh belongingness uh and the belongingness survey, which we've already heard a little bit about this earlier this evening. So um Dr. Dewan, is there anything we should add to that?
No, thank you. There was, as you mentioned, the presentation, the review of the data, a review in the website where the action plan is housed on um some of the action steps that the district is taking and the schools are taking. And to your point, you know, Ms. Littler was here this evening and shared some of that. So no, thank you. Any other does any other questions or comments? No? All right, well, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Amy. Um, we had a Health Wellness and Safety Committee meeting on April fifteenth. We had an update from Dr. Heim McCloskey on the um student mental health supports um and a list of parent resources. And um all of the resources are available um on the um the website on the um the Parent Hub. And um just to note that the the school also provides preventative education as well as um as ongoing support for these for these kids. Um, we had an update on the outside AEDs. There are two additional AEDs placed outside of the high school. One at the new turf fields and one at the stadium. And also that the trainer has one available on his cart, and they were graciously supplied by Wissahicken family. So thank you to that family. Um, we then had an update on Wake Up and Learn from Kristen Rawlings. And with the note that Dr. Morris would be presenting to us tonight, and we had that update um on Wake Up and Learn. And again, all that information is is can be found on the WIS wellbeing website. We then had a a very important um information session uh by Danielle Hay about staff mental health supports. And um there are, she, we heard about all the supports that are available to staff through um both insurance and other programs. And that is it. And then on the sixteenth, there was, so this was the Board um Health Wellness Committee. And then on the sixteenth, there was a District um Health and Wellness Committee, and I did not receive the um the the notes from that yet, but I will report back to when I do get them.
Great, thanks, Rosetta.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Um, Board Representatives, um we'll get Marshall's report next time. I'm actually going to do my MCIU report next time as well. Uh, North Monaco?
There was discussion at the North Monaco uh board meeting last month regarding, or not this month, regarding um
Well, yeah, that's.
Regarding uh the waiting list and options for trying to figure out how to get uh more students from the waiting list into programs. Anything else?
Uh, yeah. The other thing they they spent a little bit of time with is I'm gonna get this wrong, and I'm gonna try to find it. So they're doing a similar program that I believe MCIU is um kind of investigating, but um North Penn has a um program where staff and teachers can get um uh health-related services. Do you remember the name of the company? Ever something? Um, and so they're exploring uh using that service for North Monaco. North Penn has um expressed or shared out that they've had a considerable amount of savings to their healthcare benefits because of this program. And so North Monaco is looking to investigate and determine if they should kind of jump on to that program. In addition to the waitlist, um the other thing that was kicked around is you know, they don't have any more space to actually build out or put more classrooms or or resources, I guess, but can, and and one of the things they're investigating is should they look at renting out space so that they can kind of put more students in more programs. So uh, very, very uh early preliminary discussions, but I have a feeling that more is coming because they're just the the amount of students coming in um from from all the schools that feed into a North Monaco just keeps growing every year, and they're anticipating that's And they're anticipating that's only gonna continue on, and they they have no more room. Like, there there's nowhere else that they can build, so more to come. And then all your other average kind of uh business and um the the food service. Students for. School Board Appreciation made us all strawberry shortcake cakes that were delicious. That's all.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? As far as the waitlist, I mean, do the students that are on the waitlist, do we have Wissahican students that are on that waitlist? Wow, hey, how do we like, wha- what do we do for those students, Jim?
Well, every year there are uh many more students who would like to go to North Monaco from all the sending districts than can and can go. So uh sometimes they're waitlisted, sometimes it's like college is actually like, sorry, you you don't have that program, that's your first choice program, that's your second, those are both full. Um, and they have, they've had this problem for since they were created, it's just, it's just uh. Conversely, if there's ever a program that doesn't have enough interest. Um, that that's not enough students want to even go into that, then there's step is get put on probation and they sit wait a little while, and then if it still doesn't get enough. They convert that space to something different. It's tech school related that might be more event, more interesting for students, so it's it's a evolving process they have. They have a heck of a challenge on their hands because they have all of a sudden these students. At different times of day and North Penn is right there, so they have special privileges and it's just a, it's quite a uh. Calculus problem to solve, but they do, they do a nice job, all things considered.
Program, they've kind of divested that because of the like decrease of students who had interest. They have like three sections now for hospitality. You know, it started off with one, so they keep growing that, um, now they have a graphic arts or. Marketing that that's relatively new, so they're constantly looking at the needs, you know, what students want and. Evolving their space, but there's also finite things they can't do, like they have. You know, only so many welding spaces that they're ever going to have, they're only gonna have so many banks for cars. You know, they're only gonna be able to page so many cars per session, so there's certain things they just can't. Overcome, unfortunately, but they're very, very creative, I must say, very creative with how they problem solve. And it's hard what what they have to do.
Well, and how does our share the tuition work? Do we only pay for the students we send? So if our students get waitlisted, we just don't have to pay like that question?
Uh, I would say the waitlist is probably a a phrase that applies to certain programs only, it's more like um how many get accepted versus not. And so, yes, uh, our tuition is based proportionately on on the number of students in a in a rolling four year. And uh, they they are very good at making sure, to use the welding example, that. E- each sending district has a shot at at some number of students in that program. The same as over here, like Border Culture is turning over to um property management now. So that's kind of new, so they're gonna give, I mean, and North Penn students have more opportunity than West students because they're bigger. But they also do pay a bigger percentage of the budget as a as a result of that.
Any other questions or comments?
Do all the career centers have this problem being overcrowded? That a theme?
The tech school?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, it it's it's always the case, if you don't, then you're you have, it's sort of the same problem as a district would have. If you don't, you have to start thinking about shutting down programs, or in a district's case, shutting down a school. Um, which is never what you want.
Right, but like, you know, we're really close to the Central Monaco Career Center, could we send kids there or no? It's only like, do they ever do sharing like that or no?
Sharing would create a rather, rather incredible uh financial challenge to to bill and so, but. But there, everyone's overbooked, it's sort of your root question is, there's no capacity.
All right, any other questions? Okay, that will move on to PSBA.
Um, really quickly, I just wanted to um touch again on the the breakfast, the the main theme um for the legislative breakfast was about funding. As often is around public education, um, but we learned that Pennsylvania is, did they say forty-eighth or forty-ninth? They used both numbers.
It's forty-eight.
Forty-eighth in funding, um, so Pennsylvania gives, out of the fifty states, we're just about last in the amount of. Uh, uh, funding we provide for public education, um, so that was a little disheartening, but um. Governor Shapiro's budget does allow for one point one billion in new school funding, but nine hundred million of that will go to um. Schools based on adequacy formula to ensure that um every school has appropriate level of resources, so that's probably not gonna affect us a lot, correct Wade? Um, but it it does um help with schools that really will need it, which is which is wonderful. There's gonna be fifty million dollars in special education funding, thirty million for pre-K programs. Um, continued funding for the universal free breakfast uh during school and a new summer program, uh food service program. And then one point five billion over five years to repair schools and make them healthy and safe, so. This may not affect us as much, um, but it's it's about also the um fair funding lawsuit um. To try to level up with uh for schools that didn't have enough funding, so we are heavily um in this district heavily. Um, uh leaning on our taxpayers for most of our budget, and so that's where we're running into some issues here uh with our budget. But overall, it was a positive um message that the governor is investing in public education, um, so that was really nice.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to add uh to what Deanna was saying is that um uh Governor Shapiro but Shapiro's budget. Has a lot of great news for education funding in Pennsylvania for sure, uh, it still has to be passed by the legislature, um, so. It, there's probably gonna be some compromises and some like, you know, tweaking downwards. Most likely, I'm trying to be polite, but what one thing that I did uh take a lot of heart from is the discussion around charter school reform. And some of the charter school um changes that are on the table that seem to have bipartisan support, meaning not just Democrats but Republicans. Um, are behind it and um all districts will benefit if um there's cyber charter funding reform. Um, even us, even though we don't have a lot of students in um cyber charters, I think the projection is that if the. The bill is passed, we could benefit to the tune of in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars. Um, to the plus side, and that could be like a essentially like a recurring benefit to our budget, so that is significant and would be good. And again, has bipartisan support, so fingers crossed that something will actually happen this year.
If I may add to the PSBA issue, um, uh, PSBA has, is in the process of forming. The PSBA Trust Institute Center for Artificial Intelligence. And their kickoff is May ninth, uh, where they're going to have a virtual symposium on the subject. And I will be speaking on legal policy issues on the artificial intelligence landscape. And if you have not started to examine. The impact that artificial intelligence will have, not only on our overall society, but. On education, um, I think we're on the verge of. The equivalent of the Industrial Revolution uh in terms of what it's going to mean to. Education, so it's been a particular interest of mine and uh. Uh, last week I spoke to the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators on the subject. But um uh, PSBA has recognized its significance. And what it will mean and has set up this new uh program, so May ninth. Um, is the uh the program that will be the kickoff of artificial intelligence. The the one issue that has been a real disappointment to me is that unlike other states. And notably Cali- California, Oregon, and Ohio, the states depart, the state departments of education. Have taken uh a very strong leadership role in developing artificial intelligence models. To be followed by their constituent districts, Pennsylvania has yet to get there, so to the extent that you're advocating at the PSBA level. We need to uh create greater pressure on the legislature and our gov- uh governor and. The Department of Education to provide more leadership because this is one area that we are uh. We we we're not, we're behind other states in in terms of the issue. And if you were watching Sixty Minutes last evening on uh the uh extraordinary success of the. The chipmaker Nvidia, you will begin to get a flavor of how our world is about to change.
Jeff, where can we talk to the chief on May ninth?
Uh, I can send you the, I can send the symposium uh. Registration information to Jim and I sh- uh I'm sure he'll get it to the appropriate individual. I'm sending it right now electronically.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. ERC, Deanna?
Nothing to report here.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to the second public comment period, no one in person, anyone online, okay?
Yes, we have one raised hand on Zoom and it's Carmina Taylor.
Okay, um, oh, and I guess I should say my spiel again. Um, maximum five speakers on any particular topic, please leave a comment to three minutes and note it's not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on board docs. All right, uh, Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I did, is, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So again, on the heels of the Black Hall of Fame um ceremony on Friday night, it was asked. Um, who were, who are the members of the Wissahican School District Hall of Fame Committee? So I'm specifically, I I was told there's seven members of the committee, so I'd like to know who is. Who was on the twenty twenty-three Wissahican School District Hall of Fame Committee and if they're changing for twenty twenty-four. Could you also provide that list? That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Katie, anyone else?
No more raised hands on Zoom.
All right, then we'll move on to board comments and I just had two comments. One, I wanted to note that Wit Town, Wit Payne Township Board of Supervisors is instituting a program to appoint high school students. To serve as non-voting members on various boards and commissions. Including their Board of Supervisors, their Planning Commission, Parks and Open Space Board, Shate- Shade Tree Commission, Human Relations Commission. And their Environmental Advisory Council, um, and on their website witpain township.org, they do have a description of these commission. Of these different positions, um, so they just asked that we share this out, any high school students that may be interested in applying to sit on any of these boards. Should go ahead and apply, so if anyone is interested, again, witpain township dot org. And also, speaking with Pain Township, they recently on Earth Day. Uh, did hold an event for our elementary students and two of our local parochial schools, um, they attended, um, where they. Awarded some of our students for um some poetry they wrote about the environment, um, so that was a really nice event. I got to hand out some awards to some of our students, that was a very nice event. Um, so any other board comments? Yeah, yes. You?
I was like saying with you that uh that Sixty Minutes segment last night about Nvidia was phenomenal, I really enjoyed it, that's all I got. A robot. I was, I was, frankly, I was, I was worried about the future, I'm not sure what this robot's gonna do, but maybe uh. I don't know, now I'm like, I walk downstairs, I see my family and like. Like throw some water on them just to make sure, you never know anymore.
Well, now I'm gonna have to watch it, I'm curious, any other comments?
I have one quick thing to add, um, last Thursday I went to the um, the poetry slam at the high school. And um, I would love to see this event, this is the, this is the first time they had it since uh twenty nineteen and they brought it back this year. Um, and there weren't that many people there, but I would love to see this more well attended because it was absolutely phenomenal, um. There, Hannah Kim won and then Bel Regazzo um got second place, and they were both unbelievable in their poem and their. Their performance and the way they used words and literary devices, it was, it was, it was fantastic to watch, so I. Uh, I just wanted to give a shout out to to those two, um, and then there were four elementary school students who performed as well and a middle school student, and she did amazing, so. Uh, it was just really cool. Both my kids were, did it, but that's why I was there primarily, but it was a treat to see the the high schoolers perform, it really was, really cool.
Any other comments? All right, well then, um, can we have a motion to adjourn? All right, all paper?
Aye.
For adjourned.